We have our microphones on. If there's any time where you can't hear us, please let us know because that means they can't hear us at home, for anyone who's listening. So we'll get started. Appreciate everybody being here. We will take a couple comments a little bit tonight, as always, and try to get everybody out of here at a reasonable time. I don't know if staff is taking it back. Start by thanking our city manager and staff for what they did in trying to accomplish what we asked them to do, and that's come up with a draft balance that shows a 10% reserve. And so probably there'll be some conversations how we got there tonight, but applaud the staff for their hard work in getting to where we are now. And I think we're in a better place than we've been in this whole process. So that's it. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Buttery and we'll go from there.
Thanks, Mayor. Council will recall that at the last work session, we had a couple of hard hats sitting on the table that I suppose suggest that the budget was under construction. Well, at the end of a successful construction project, what do you have? You have a ribbon cutting. So tonight, when we're done, I'm hoping we're gonna have a ribbon cutting of a successful budget. That's up to you. We'll have to see how it goes. We did accomplish the task that you gave us. We believe we've done it with only minimally cutting services to the community. We do not believe we've reduced safety levels or street level services or customer service. There will be some things that might be noticeable within the community, but I think they will be few and far between. Your staff is prepared to discuss the process that we went through to get to the 10% unrestricted, unassigned fund balance for the general fund reserve. So Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. We don't have a presentation. We're prepared to answer your questions.
Sounds great. Council, what do you think? My initial thought is we would go with these one at a time and we could discuss them if you think need be in terms of the things that have been changed and then move on and go from there. Does that make sense to everybody, or would you like to approach it differently? If not, then David, I'll go back to you and we'll just start with revenue and we'll run through these and council, you know, have your question. One comment. I have a soft hat here tonight, so I'm not expecting to hit stones, boulders, rocks.
And I have a small pair of scissors here so that the ribbon cutting can be done in a more gentle way.
Okay, fair enough.
Let's see. If we could, council, if we could refer to the 30th of November, actually, I think yours is dated the 1st of December, there were some specified tasks and some implied tasks and then some major items that I want to review with you and with the community. And it starts off with the specified task. The mission that you gave us was to get the general fund reserved 10% of the total operating expenditures. The implied tasks with that, that we believe that we accomplished were do not reduce safety levels, do not reduce street level services, do not reduce customer service, and to meet as many of the council objectives as possible. Remember, these came from the goals and objectives session that were summarized for you in April and then returned. Actually, no comments were given to me at the time that I sent that summary out. The primary goal was to balance all demands to get the general fund reserve back to 10%. We have accomplished that. Raises for employees. We were able to maintain the 3% merit pool that was proposed to you in the original budget. We've talked about the finance accounting system, CASL, and the finance director has suggested that he could get along just fine, delaying that till 2019. You wanted us to release the hiring freeze. Actually, that was a suggestion of mine that council bought into. We did that for one police officer position earlier this year, you will recall, and we have done so for another police officer position for 2018. We did not unfreeze the streets maintenance worker to position. I wanted to get us back on track with the vehicle replacement program in the general fund. We were scheduled to replace three vehicles and one large piece of equipment. We've reduced that down by one vehicle, so two vehicles and one piece of equipment will be replaced. You wanted us to get the police department fence. It was in the original proposed budget and it is still included. And the IT position, it too was in the original proposed budget and it too is still included. So the major items for discussion were, that I just wanted to highlight for you. Community investment remains. The vast majority of you indicated to me that community investment was important to you, as it is to your staff, and we maintain that in this budget at $20,000. Main Street, we left Main Street in. Council, you get to fuss and cuss about that this evening and give your direction as it relates to Main Street personnel and the O&M budget. We left it in its entirety, $54,400. There's also a $7,200 grant that both is a revenue and an expense that's not part of the $54,400. Special projects has been moved under the city manager and reduced to 30 hours a week and their O&M budget has been reduced by one-third. Broadband was not funded. We believe, well, it was not one of the original goals and objectives. If council wants to change that, this would be the time to do so. It is not funded, however. The special projects office believes there are grants available through DOLA and will pursue grants to support broadband. And there's ways to manipulate those four items as you might see fit. On page two of this document, underneath the calculation of total operating expenditures, you can see the list of things from the general fund, the most recent draft of November 16th and the December 5th draft. And if you go down about halfway across the page, you will see that we have indeed met the 10% with about $1,600 over that 10% amount. So the budgeted fund balance exceeds what you asked us to reach the required amount. So the details. Now, the details of this list hopefully weren't intended to confuse you, but you did have a draft copy of the budget at your disposal. So the list of things were from the most recent draft, the November 16th draft. There were several revenue adjustments, as we said many times. As we approached the end of the year, there's greater clarity on revenue streams, there's also greater clarity on expenses. So, Mr. Mayor, is it your desire for me to go line by line through these?
I don't think so, but I appreciate the start and we'll go from there. Let's go back to page one because I know for sure that we might have a little conversation about Main Street. I'll start by saying this with major item number one. At least for me, I always speak for myself, I'm thrilled that we keep community investment. We found a way to do that. I think that's a really important thing that the city does and the return on investment is tremendous and so thank you for that. Council, any issues with community investment that anybody seems to like to talk about? We'll just take these one at a time. Okay, if not, we'll move on to Main Street personnel. I was one that wasn't actually a big proponent of Main Street. I'm not going to fall on my sword over that. I see there's value there. I wish there would be something I could put my arms around for the last couple of years, but we've probably got that. Council, thoughts on Main Street? I'll go to you, Val, because you and I agreed a little bit on Main Street. What are your thoughts there?
I think the trajectory of Main Street needs to remain dwindling support. I'm glad to see we have support. We had a Main Street meeting this afternoon in which I told them there was a preliminary budget, but we're all up in the air because the council gets to decide what they want to do with Main Street. The amounts that are shown here are greater than expected because of earlier conversations we had.
Yes, I propose that we delete the line item personnel. There's a couple of reasons for that. Main Street has made a decision on their own to enter into an employment agreement with an individual without knowing where that salary would come from, without knowing whether the council and the city can provide that. You know, it's a parallel universe they're operating in. They entered into an agreement with an individual who was to be terminated by this city manager per poss. Why in the world would we want to continue to fund an individual who is found not to be competent and to hold a position here?
Ma'am, let me just clarify one thing. There was a recommendation to me for termination. The decision on termination had not been made. So there was a recommendation, and that's as far as it had gotten. So there was not a decision by the city manager to terminate. It was a recommendation to me.
And then I'll go one step further. Why would we fund employment on individuals that have absolutely no oversight over, that no longer has a relationship with the city? And frankly, can Main Street clear out how to pay for an individual to be in a permanent role?
I'm happy that you're able to do that. I disagree with Carol a little bit. Main Street has been in place for a long time and been doing a lot of good things, and I think they're at a precipice where, given another year, which we're supporting them here, they can get on their own, they can double their grants, as they told us, and do many great things. And I'm willing to support that. They put a lot of work into it up to now, regardless of the little details we're talking about as far as the personnel. I think we've come too far to abandon it now and we need to make it happen and go that next step and finish out this year and we'll see where we are next year. But I think there's some good things can happen with Main Street. And some time ago in this council chambers, we heard from many, many people in the business community about how happy they were with Main Street. We need not to forget that, and I think that's very, very important. So I very much support keeping it for this coming year.
I agree, Ken, and I agree with funding them with some passion for O&M. And their ability to double their grants is based on having a coordinator, either a part-time coordinator or a full-time coordinator. For the city to use tax dollars to pay for a coordinator that they have absolutely no oversight over, I think is inappropriate. I do not want to leave them high and dry without that O&M money, but I don't see why we would continue to fund a coordinator we have no control over.
Mayor, council, can I interject? Just for this, the Main Street project, the money is budgeted in this proposed budget as it was prior, I mean, a long time. It doesn't necessarily reflect a recommendation to keep that position. It's just to show that this is how much was budgeted, this is how much was for the coordinator position, and this is how much was in there for O&M. The total amount budgeted is $54,400 excluding the grant-funded amount. So really, it's just, what we're looking for tonight is how much we want to keep in the budget, and we're hearing that it would be not a position, but rather a line item, possibly a contribution to the Main Street board.
Well, then I would recommend a contribution of $22,000 to $54,000.
And Carol, if council decides to go that direction, where would you want to take that extra money and put it there? I'll give you a hint.
Well, if it were, if I were queen for the day, it would go to broadband.
Okay, I was hoping it would go to community investment, but broadband is a good place for it.
That's just something that we can't ignore. And if that money were made available, either it goes back into the general fund or it goes... I would recommend broadband, but I'm just one opinion.
Main Street has given value to the city of Woodland Park. The coordinator has done an excellent job. It was a surprise to many people, including on Main Street, the situation that occurred. I believe that this is the proper way to go. I support Main Street and I support this budget towards Main Street. I think we will get value out of Main Street. Allow them to move forward and do their job. I don't see why we have to have claws showing over this. It should be...
Let me ask you this, Paul. Would you then recommend the entire $54,000 for whatever they wanted to use it for?
Main Street gives us a value. Main Street is looking at things to promote the community downtown and pedestrian safety. The only issue that I have on the board, pedestrian safety and street maintenance, they are going in the right direction. They have introduced this town to the whole nation, and thank you, Darlene Jensen, for doing that and for working so hard to promote Woodland Park and to be proactive in grant writing and in the business community. That's my statement. I stick by supporting Main Street and I will continue to do so.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm getting feedback from the public that Carol, we need you to use the microphone and that we don't believe that John leaves your microphone on. Mayor, are you sure it's on?
No, you can't hear me.
That's cool, they're watching. Well, then I'll make my statement again. I would recommend that we reduce the Main Street budget line to $22,000.
Let me add a couple of sentences. Please. Is it on now? John, what are you doing? How's that? You can hear me now, I presume? Ah, it's never been clearer to me. I ought to be careful how I say this, I guess. What exactly Main Street has done for us. Part of that lack of knowledge is just, I didn't ask the questions or I haven't really talked about Main Street with anyone beyond Val to, not in a detailed way. I agree with Carol that if, in fact, we have no oversight over the coordinator, I would object to leaving $32,400 in this budget. It's not clear to me what Main Street is gonna do in 2018, so it would be a good idea if I could talk to someone in a little more detail. I believe in funding them for the O&M budget. $72,000 for grants, this is a forecast, I would guess, that we'll get that much. So that's my position. O&M, yes. $32,400 for the coordinator, a portion of what she gets paid, no. No?
Originally, in our first budget meeting, everybody kind of knows where I stand on Main Street. I felt that that money could be divvied up in other places. I still strongly feel that way. I think Main Street is viable. They have enough people on Main Street to function.
You got my...
Yeah. I see where the $32,000 is actually, we're in, we're, that's to an $8 million budget, that's very little. Carol is right, there is no oversight to this individual. If we go ahead and just give them the money and say, here, this is to pay your employee... I'm kind of on the fence now with this one. What's the expectations for this group? What's the expectations for this $32,000? Are we going to, I guess we'll readdress it next year, but maybe if they realize that we're gonna go ahead and take it out of the budget next year, then they will prepare for it instead of being kind of blindsided at the moment. I still feel it should be just moved either to broadband or to community investment, but as I'm seeing that $32,000 in a budget of $8 million is very, very miniscule. So I want to hear what else Val has to say and maybe, I guess I'm the last one, aren't I? Hmm. I still go back to my original. I think Main Street should be defunded completely and that they can do this on their own. That's where I stand with this. And I believe that money can be put into community investment and since they are a 501(c)(3), they can go to community investment and request the money there, just like every other nonprofit in town. What makes them special that we're not funding the cupboards executive director, we're not funding all these other nonprofit executive directors? Why are we funding Main Street as executive director? Why are we funding Main Street? We're not funding anybody else. So I see where, I'm sure I'm gonna get raked over the coals for this, but I truly believe that Main Street's funding should go somewhere else. With that money, we can add to community investment and then we can work on broadband. And I know this stuff is miniscule compared to the large budget, but I guess this is what's left. Once we decide these, I think we're done. And let me go back to David, thank you for the 10%. I think it's going to, I read an article recently in the paper about why are we fighting over $800,000? Well, we don't know how much the Aquatic Center is gonna cost. I still have a feeling that we're guesstimating and having this extra cash around is really gonna, it lets you sit back and take a breath and go, okay, well, if it works out better, then we have this money. If it doesn't, then we have this money. So I think the getting to the 10% and then my going back about the 20%, I started looking at all the small communities around the country, and the average was anywhere from 20% to 25% in the reserve. So I will continue to press that and I think in the future, we should consider a higher reserve just to, in case we have a big project that we want to do, boom, we just do it. We don't have to get a loan, we don't have to go out and find money.
I totally agree with that. When we went into with eyes wide open on the Aquatic Center, we were close to 20% or about 17%.
Yeah, we were.
And it was that margin that allowed us to make a decision to use the money versus fighting for another tax increase, which I think was an appropriate approach. And several years ago, we decided, okay, if we're gonna go into this project plus a couple of other capital projects, we would be willing to accept the 10%. Last year, it was not feasible for any number of reasons, but not because of mismanagement. I appreciate what the staff did in coming up with the 10%. So yes, amounts like $22,000 do count. Amounts like $30-whatever-thousand do count. Every penny does count. But my argument still is that we've given up a position that we have no control over. Why should we pay the salary of an individual in a nonprofit when we don't pay the salary for any other individual in any other nonprofit?
I agree. So you're right about that money. And like, we don't, I guess I asked the question on the opening of the Aquatic Center, what's next for this community? What's the next big thing to make this community more prosperous? And if we have the funds to do that, we can do it quickly. So I will push for 20%, 25%. I think that will save us in the future, might be five years, might be 10 years. Heck, we might not all be here, but at least that council will have the decision to bring in that big next project, capital project.
Yeah. That's working, okay. I guess my point is, Main Street's come a long way. We had, presented to us a while back, two or three pages of things that have been done by Main Street that they've been involved in. And I think it's too soon, too quick to just cut it off right now. I think they're gonna, assuming we approve this, they're gonna go throughout this next year knowing that they're on the docket to be considered for being cut next year. But I think we owe it to them, given the work that's been put into this community, and we owe it to our business community. I'm a business person. I've been in this community for 32-plus years, and the business people need this. And I think they made that clear when they came before this council a while back, as I said before. So I think it's too soon to cut it off just yet. Let's watch and see how it develops this coming year. Let's give it a chance. We've come too far to cut it off this quick. I understand the concern about the supervision, but I think time will tell and I think we owe it to this community, the business community, to pass this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject very quickly. You may remember from that Main Street presentation that it was presented by the chairperson, a request for, my memory said it was $30,000. And I don't recall if it was 20 for an O&M and 10 for personnel or the other way around. So that chairperson is here, he can validate that, is what that request was. But that may allow you to bring some closure to this, understanding what their thoughts were.
Let me add to this. So what happens if we decide to continue to fund Main Street this year and next year, right, a budget cycle, they're right on the cusp of becoming accredited or whatever the terminology is? Are we gonna go ahead and refund them again?
Re-terminate at that time?
Okay, well, my point is, is that they've been real close every year and we continue to fund them. What insurances do we have that that will, they will be where they say they're gonna be by next year and they won't need our funding?
They've not, the designation and the term is designation?
Thank you.
They've received that interim designation and the final designation could occur within the next few months, but it's not, they haven't applied for the final full designation in years past. There's a series of events and they've accomplished everything to get to that place for the final designation. So they've not attempted that in the past, they're just on that timeline. I just want council to have the full understanding of what that process looks like. So I don't know what happens if they fail in this designation, if they would come back the next year, that I don't know. But they've not failed before is the point I'm making about the designation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm partially recusing myself, but not really. I think David's suggestion to have Mr. Carlson come up and give us a review is very valuable. A lot of us were here for all those presentations. I have intimate knowledge of all of it, more than the rest, which is fine, the liaison. But for instance, John missed a couple of those things, and so I think it'd be very valuable. I made some suggestions about possible funding levels. I even talked today in the board meeting about preparing for full independent funding next year and to be serious about it. I've put out some recommendations in the past. I would, at this point, defer to an average year, but I really would like Mr. Carlson to come up and speak to more of the issues than me speaking to him.
And Bob, if you could just summarize the request, please.
There were a couple of concerns. One was expressed by Carol on why should we fund the...
Do me a favor, would you stand over there so everybody can see you and speak to everybody?
Why should we fund the Main Street coordinator? The Main Street program is a highly bureaucratic program dictated by DOLA and the national program. I came from the aquatic program where we didn't take a penny from the city. But in this case, when I saw what we had to do to accomplish all these steps that David talked about, and we have been progressing very rapidly, it took someone of Darlene's competence and drive and to get this all done. And DOLA has told us that we have probably been the most fast-track of any other cities that have been in the Main Street program. And next week, we intend, or actually Thursday evening, the day after tomorrow, we are going to be providing DOLA, who will be down here, with the draft application for designated status. And hopefully, they will come back to us on, before the 21st, to, with any comments they want to make, and then we hope then to have a final submission before the end of the year. And then we hope then to have a final submission before the end of the year, on the 21st, to DOLA. So they are delighted with our progress. They praise us highly. They've organized many events in Woodland Park because of our reputation with them. So we've had, Darlene has led this effort. And we really need somebody that can work full-time. Because, not full-time, but at least 28 hours a week, which we've been paying here. Because no individual volunteer could do all that work. And certainly, I couldn't put in that kind of time to, especially on one thing. I've involved in lots of stuff. So that's important. I think the other question was whether it could be funded as part of the community investment. Certainly, we have no problem with putting it under City Council budget line item like community investment is. But they tend each get $2,000 or $3,000, total of 20, 30,000 in a year. And so this is be kinda like, you know, the gorilla or a whale swallowing the rest. So I would prefer to have a separate line item. The other question then was whether or not council has control over what we do in Main Street. Val is council's representative on Main Street Board. He has voting rights. If he sees anything that's going off track from what council, he senses what is council's direction, he can tell us. And he's already told us, looks like you guys are gonna have to ramp, start ramping down on the budget. And so we are fully prepared to do that. But I really appreciate what Ken has said, that hitting us out of the blue, DOLs a boom in one year, that would be a real, real cut. So we were willing to compromise, I think in the presentation I made. We were willing to come down to a number that would be somewhat of a compromise. And I believe I was going along with Val's number, but maybe not. Anyway, in my presentation, I was looking for a total of 30,000 between both the O&M and personnel and with project funds. And that's just city money. So that's what I was looking for, because I thought that was kind of, what I was hearing is kind of a consensus number going from zero up to 50, somewhere in the middle there. So what we're trying to do is keep the program going. And we do need to have a Main Street Coordinator to do that, because it's a lot of work. Thank you.
Who wants to go first?
Noel, go ahead.
I wanna go first.
Let me just...
Go ahead, Bob.
Just briefly. So CIF is already, we already have applications. The process is already going. So per Bob's suggestion, as a different line item wouldn't be really the only thing we could do at this point legitimately without going into next year's applications, because we're already, I mean, we're gonna meet in a couple of days, right? So I just wanted to put that in there as an interjection. I threw out a $40,000 summation, you know, not including the grant money. You know, there's all kinds of numbers out there, but I just wanted to mention about the CIF. It's not really a place we could put it exactly at this point.
So I like what Bob just said. I like the 30,000. I see 24 left over. I see 10 going towards community investment. And I see 14 going into broadband. And we can find the other 30,000 for broadband. Then everybody's covered. Sing kumbaya, we walk out of here.
Bob, I'm gonna ask the same question next year as I'm gonna ask today. I don't think it's ever gotten answered. And we've spent money year after year after year. And everyone's telling me how great Main Street is and what they're doing, right? Nobody's come up and said, here's what I wanna hear from anybody on Main Street. What do you hang your hat on for the last two or three years? What have you done? What has made our Main Street better? What has made it easier for our businesses to make money downtown? This is what I'm looking for from Main Street. And I haven't seen, I haven't seen one person come up and say, everybody, we've had this meeting 100 times. I couldn't do without Main Street because they did this, this, and this for me, and now my business is this much better. And I may not hear that today. I doubt that I will. And I don't know if I'll be sitting here next year at this time, but I would encourage the other council members or whoever's sitting here next year, we need something. We need some outcome, not just we're gonna get designated, not that we're gonna have a chance to get more funding, more grants. That doesn't help me. How did you make downtown better? How is Main Street better now than it was two years ago? And I don't want the answer now, because I don't think, I don't think you have it. I don't think anybody does, because I haven't heard it. But next year, I think that's a legitimate question for this council. If they fund you 25, 30, whatever they fund, and here's the question, what did you do for us this year that mandates that we continue to support you in the future? Because I'm sorry, I haven't seen it. And we've had this discussion, and I've had it with a lot of you. I wanna embrace Main Street as much as anybody. I'm a business guy. If it helps Main Street, I got a feeling it could possibly help the rest of the community, even those that aren't on Main Street. So I want that. I just haven't seen any fruits of your work. And I won't disagree that there's been a lot of working. There are volunteers working together. Granted, there's always some drama along the way, but I respect everybody that's in those positions and that have worked hard. I really do. But I'd just like to see some outcome. I really would. And I'd like to have, you know, Murph or somebody on Main Street, you know, Tanner, everybody on Main Street come in next year and say, you know what, I've increased my business because of all these things that Main Street has done. Does that make sense, Bob? One-word answer?
Yes.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, we asked the new chairman, or whatever they're called, to make a presentation to us not long ago to convince this council that the money has been well-spent. All I know is that they have, in order to make it to the next level in this Amway scheme, is that they've gotta have a coordinator, either a part-time or a full-time. And the kind of money that they're eligible for does not enable them to pay a salary. Yet they've taken on hiring someone without knowing where that salary's gonna come from, assuming the council is going to pay them or provide the money for a coordinator. I think that was presumptuous. I do know that there's got to be a relationship between this group and the council. But the presentation that we received, that I asked for, I wanted to give them the opportunity to prove to us their value. It didn't happen. And not only that, we've got this conundrum now with an employee who may be still an employee of the city, may be an unpaid employee of this nonprofit. I don't know where that stands. So 22,000, I don't know what they'll use that for. I'm assuming for expenses. But funding a part-time employee, forget it.
You know, I've probably been the biggest naysayer relative to Main Street on this particular panel. I would, I would agree with Noel, and I would agree with Val, and I would agree with John, that I would be willing to give 20,000 or so, 25, pick the number, take the rest of that money. For me, I would like to see it go to broadband. I think it's the most important thing that we don't have. It's something that we've talked about at length. And so I'd like to, I think we're close to some consensus in that regard. Are we not? Who does not like that approach?
Does that approach mean we provide some funds for a coordinator?
No.
We know we provide some funds.
Some funds, O&M, or call it what you want.
And they're autonomous now? Let them manage it.
Well, and I think the word that he was looking for that I didn't hear is, what are the results? Talk about outcome, but what are the results? And I'm somewhat in the same boat. So I agreed with most of what you said. That in itself is unusual.
Will you agree with me?
Yeah. Yeah, so I would accept a compromise along the lines of what we've just been discussing.
Do we know what the 22,000? I mean, we've got a number here that would pay for a part-time whatever, and then 22,000 for something else. What is that 22,000 for?
I'm gonna, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the treasurer of Main Street, who's sitting in the audience tonight, to come up and possibly explain that I left all my stuff at home. So she has, hopefully brought her stuff. Maybe she hasn't, I don't know. At least I'm not gonna be on the spot. She will be.
And what are we asking for, Val?
Breakdown of these expenses and things, which is Carol, what Carol asked.
O&M, okay.
Stephanie, I have those from the original budget proposal, if you don't.
Steph?
Thank you. Okay.
So for, is that on? For this last year, just over 12,000 of it was spent on administrative expenses of the $25,000 budget that we had for 2017. 10,000 of it goes to street projects. And I'm doing this all off of memory. About 1,600 of it went to the rest area sign for street projects. Trying to think what else. I'm sorry, I do not have it in front of me.
I'm sorry, I thought the question was about the 2018 budget. But I think there were some for Antler Alley. I think there was some for the parking sign that you mentioned.
Yes.
And I will see if I have other things here, Stephanie.
Excuse me, just a moment. And that is the majority of it. The 5,000 came out of the cities portion of our street projects, which...
Excuse me, Steph. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you want 2018 numbers, not...
Correct. What are you gonna spend 22,000 on?
Not what we did in 2017.
And I do not have the budget for that either. I believe the breakdown was approximately still 10,000 for street projects. So the things like we did, the money that we put into the rest area project, the park and walk study, that's where the 10,000 for street projects goes. And then the additional 12,500, I believe it was, was for administrative expenses.
And what would administrative expenses incur?
So mostly for last year. That would have been, a large portion of it is for our contract with the person who does our admin for our meeting minutes, our recording, all of that, as well as our website updates, Facebook, things like that. Her contract for 2017 was $3,500. The other things on here, a lot of it was for training and DOLA sessions. They, it was money that went to the park and walk study, also to a number of conferences that we had with DOLA, partnership training, board training. A lot of this I came in on the tail end of, so I can't give you much information about it.
What other, where else would you derive those funds for that type of activity?
So part of it is actually covered by DOLA. When Darlene Jensen and Jill Baker White, who was the treasurer, went to the National Conference, most of that was covered by a DOLA grant. So not all of it comes from the city budget. We can go to DOLA for some of those expenses, but not all of them.
Can you tell me how much DOLA did give you last year?
7700.
Thank you.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good cash cow.
And a large majority of that, 4,000 of that that was granted from DOLA went into that rest area sign at Bergstrom Park. And then another 1,600 of that project came from the street project fund from the city's money.
What other sources can you obtain that type of funding, you know, aside from the, you know, the grants that you apply for for specific projects?
That would be a question for Darlene Jensen. She is the one that knows most of that, where it comes from. And again, that's why she's so important. She knows all of those various different avenues that we can get money from. And that is part of the duties and responsibilities of our Main Street Coordinator is to seek out those grants and funds. Hi, Noel.
So what do you actually need besides street projects, sign projects, grants? What do you actually need to fund the board, the functions of the board?
Well, in the budget for 2018, I believe it was 22,500. Again, the breakdown, since I don't have it in front of me, I believe it was still...
I'm looking at 12,500 for administrative.
Yes.
So if I just gave you that, you would function just fine, correct?
Just to operate, that wouldn't give us any money to do any projects.
You just said some of the projects came from grants. When I watched that presentation that Bob gave, the majority of those projects were grants.
Not necessarily. Let me go back to our finances, Steph.
Actually, Bob can answer that if you don't.
I have it right here.
What I'm getting at is that 22,000 might be a little bit much if, to just do operating costs, just to have them function is 12,500 with their website, paper, training. Training even comes from DOLA as a grant, I just said. So...
Some of it, yes.
Some of it. So I'm almost, I'm going back to is this, Main Street could almost function 100% without a single penny from the city.
Unfortunately, the DOLA grants only...
Everybody did their job as like DDA, base for paper, they do Aquatics Center. They did, they did it completely unfunded. So if you only got 12,500, could you survive?
That would basically cover our budget just for street projects alone. Well, that's what we call the fund, street projects. Our projects account from the money that we use from the city to go directly towards projects. It doesn't cover any administrative cost whatsoever.
Okay, so I'm just looking for administrative costs. What would it take for Main Street to have administrative costs taken care of?
The board has agreed 12,500.
Thanks, Steph.
That's where I stand. Thank you.
Mayor and council, can I add to this?
Sure.
So we're looking at the budget that was submitted to the city that details the line items for the 22,000 that they're asking for from the city, and then the 12,500 that is made up of DOLA grants and also other grants, donations, fundraising that is not from the city. Looking at the 22,000, they have money budget, or in the proposed budget are requested for conference and trainings, meeting expenses, a board retreat, volunteer appreciation, travel, dues, licenses and registrations, office supplies, postage, printing and publications.
We don't do that for any...
Liability insurance, advertising, contract labor, administrative services. I believe that was Creative Concepts, right?
Yes.
Facebook and website, social media, Main Street event and booth expenses, and then Main Street project expenses of 10,000. That makes up the 22,000.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Steph. So in the interest of time, let's have a proposal that we can all agree on.
Here's your...
I went through this in detail when I had all the stuff in front of me. That's why I threw the 40 grand out there originally. Or the, instead of the 54. That's why I threw it out there originally.
Would you be good with...
It's the baseline.
Can we agree on 20,000 and put the rest in broadband? Can I get a consensus on that?
I'd go with the 40 as a deduction as a compromise for this year.
But what would the 40,000 be used for? If it's for a coordinator, I would not support that. Noel has kind of cut down to the essence of what they need. And that appears to be 12,500, is that it?
Well, a lot of it sounded like...
22,000?
22,000.
And Mayor and council, remember the requests that we've heard. I don't know how solid it was, but it was 30,000 from the Main Street Board.
I'm at 30. I might as well, you know, their leader said 30. That's what they need. I'm good with that.
But 30 for what?
Doesn't matter.
Yes, it does.
They're our teenager, and we're the adults, and we're giving... They're our teenager, and we're the adults, and we're giving them the money, and they go spend it the way they want?
No, no, that is the worst analogy you could have provided, for God's sake. Dave, I think that they have given us a number that they need for administrative costs, and that was 12,500.
22, 22. But some of those costs in there, and that 22, made me, made me go, made me cringe. Can you read them off again?
Oh, just a minute.
Mayor and Council, could I suggest, one thing that I'm used to in giving money or contributing money to various organizations is to have a process with the various organizations. I know we have an application process for the community investment funding, however, for some of the larger donations we would make to Economic Development Council, to the Chamber, they would be required to submit a budget request, which is similar to this, also a narrative that says what they plan on doing with the money, and then, at the end of that time, or maybe even quarterly, submit reports to the council detailing what they've accomplished for that year, with the money, how they used it, and so on. Part of the application process is to submit financials to the city, so we could definitely draft a policy to govern these sorts of contributions.
I like that idea. So on a quarterly basis, for instance, suppose we give them 24,000, on a quarterly basis, they can speak for their 6,000 or whatever, and if for some reason we're not seeing any progress, then we can make a further decision.
So in other words, the organizations that we would contribute to were to be accountable through a reporting process and an application process?
Does that make sense to you, Bob?
Yes.
I know you may not be happy with the number, but if you can come to council on a quarterly basis, whatever we decide, and have outcome, have results, as John said, I can tell you for sure, for me, I'll be right with you. But if you don't, then you know what the other side of that is.
Maybe we'd like it to be as transparent as possible. We'd like to have a duty to issue quarterly reports, provide you a very detailed budget, various sources we have called for, city money, grants, et cetera. As we hope to have a lot of progress between now and- We're gonna need to get the microphone.
I'm sorry, thank you, I should-
I think we got it, though.
Okay, sorry, Bob, I shouldn't have come to you without a microphone.
So you're, I totally agree with Mike's proposal. Are we basing this on a specific amount, that they be required to come to us on a quarterly basis, or do we fence the money now in order to establish the process? And what is that amount that we fence? Is it 22,000?
Yeah, it sounds like we fence the money now, and then if expectations aren't being met, then we can make a further decision. I don't know, 22, go ahead.
You get to pick the number, you've heard several tossed around, and the fencing is a great way to do it, it would be in the line item. What I would encourage you to do, though, is have some flexibility, if the number is the 24,000 that you mentioned, 6,000 a quarter, if they're making progress towards something, and they only, they've spent a little bit less, but you can see that the next thing, just don't make it so rigid that you help them fail, make it flexible to help them succeed.
Well, and I hope everyone understands in this room, and that's why you're all here, we're trying to do what we thinks best for the community, so if you are making inroads, I see seven people up here that are gonna support you, there's no question. Bob, without a microphone, I can't, this is gonna be the last, because we're gonna move on, Bob.
Well, my only-
Okay, I was only concerned about some of the negativity with regard to Darlene. When I made my presentation, I didn't say anything about that controversy at all. I think that's behind us, and to bring, continue to bring this up is unfair, because we put it behind us, and we don't think that there should be any restriction on us being able to pay some of that money that you give us for our Main Street Coordinator. For one, Main Street organization, DOLA, requires us to pay her, okay?
I've not heard anybody say anything about paying an individual by name, they talked about a position.
Right.
So-
Well, she was talking about us having hired her back on, even though the city was thinking of firing her, type of thing, so it was very clear.
That's true, I did say that, and I stand by that.
Yeah, but we, what our position was, is that we were trying to be reasonable as far as a compromise, we knew we had to come from 54 down to something, and so, in my presentation, I thought that was about as low as we could go and still be able to accomplish stuff. But when it comes to all that iAdmin stuff, yeah, we can cut out a lot of that stuff, we don't have to have a retreat, in fact, I said that in my presentation, is that we will live with whatever you give us, we will have to develop our budget based on what you give us, we're not telling you what to give us, because we'll have to respond in kind. So, but for us, we think we, at this point in time, we need 30,000, but we would be glad to come back in April and say, hey, this is what we've accomplished, and if you don't think we've accomplished much, you can say, well, we'll cut it, or if we've accomplished luck, you give us more, whatever, and we'll have a new council then, too.
Well-
Except for you.
You just lost a friend there, buddy.
Well, I didn't take a hint.
30, 30, you've got 32,000 down here for personnel, and 22,000 for O and M, where did you come up with 30,000?
That's just what we have from when we were originally doing this budget. It's not coming from them, it's just what was in there, and we are letting council make the decision on the amount.
So the process that we just discussed, where we fence an amount of money, they've gotta come back to us with a new budget, with whatever amount we decide to fence.
That's right.
Okay.
So, Carol, how about this, where we allocate 22, they can always come back and ask for more.
I would agree with that.
And if there's not results, then we reduce that amount. They are our teenager. How about you don't like that?
Can we get consensus on 22? No? What would your number be, Ken?
I would agree more with 30, at least.
30?
But would you agree to-
And then do the process we're talking about, absolutely.
And then have them-
With 22, I'd like to see more than that, I mean, this is-
To do what, though?
To get to this point, to get to 10%, we're there, but if we wanna compromise and bring it from the 54 down to 30, I'd be okay.
I'm good with 30. Val, are you good with 30?
I'd rather we get closer to 40, but whatever.
30 was right. Would there be a prohibition against spending any of that for a coordinator then?
Well, we've asked that the amount, whatever it is, 22 or 30, be fenced, and that they come back to us with a new request on how to spend that.
Just for terminology's sake, when I hear fenced, I don't hear that you're placing a restriction on its use, I hear a fence around a particular amount of money. And so what I'm hearing, some people say is, the third, whatever the number is, goes to Main Street, the Board of Directors, they figure out how to spend it, they're accountable for how they spend it. So it's not restricted on whether they buy staples or hire someone, it's their money to use as their board sees fit, with your quarterly assessment of the validation of how they spent it, to see if you continue with the next iteration of funding.
Yes, I agree with that.
I think that's what I'm hearing.
I like it, I like it. Can we agree on 30? Paul?
It'd be more palatable. What I can imagine, if everybody in this community would just work together, what good we can have come out of Main Street, DDA, council, city, it would be fantastic. To now come here and say, there's no value to this, when I asked these three lovely ladies over here in council if there was value to Main Street, and there was value to Main Street, there is value to Main Street, there's value to their work, these people are credible, and they are being transparent. Bob, he puts it out, he lays it out good, I see no problem here, I'll go with the 30,000 to get to a point, and the quarterly report and all that, it's very transparent, there's nothing wrong with it. That's all I got, Steph.
I'll say something, so it sounds like the more money we give them, the more successful they're gonna be, that's what I'm hearing you say. Say, that's not true.
You're talking as if they're children, and they don't know what they're doing, these are business people.
Okay, well, you're not, you didn't, you didn't let me finish my statement, now, did you? Okay, so, they work hard, they work hard, and the harder they work, the more successful they're gonna be, regardless of the money we give them. So, but it makes it sound like the more money we give them, the more successful they can be, which is untrue, because they've been working their tails off for years with minimal funds, actually, so, and they're very successful, so regardless of whether we give them 22, 30, 40, 50, or they're still gonna be successful, regardless of the amount of money we give them. So 30 is okay with me, I think they can always come back and ask for more, but currently at 30 would work, I think. But it has nothing to do, more money we give them doesn't mean they're gonna be more successful. Council, I'm sorry, Val, so.
Ms. Mayor, thank you. I'm just gonna throw something out there, that sounds like some of us are kinda hedging on, how about 8,000 a quarter, that's 32,000, it's not 40, it's not 54, it's not 30 either, it's not 22, but it's 8,000 a quarter, 32,000.
No, because I felt it was appropriate to go with their O and M amount that's been designated, I'm not sure where that number came from, but of 22,000 minus the expense of the part-time coordinator, and then go from there. I heard nothing that really laid out until Mike brought it up, or is that they needed X number of dollars for X number of projects, and it was 22,000.
I think I heard six of you say that you would be okay with the 30,000.
I think we did.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Right, then we have an agreement.
But it requires a quarterly report on how that money is spent.
And there's no, just so everybody understands, I'm not telling you how to spend the money, you can spend all 30 of it on your director, but if you come and you don't have results, at least based on what council feels, then we have the ability to pull the plug. Makes sense? Is that fair?
I do have one question, though.
If that's a fair resolution, I really do.
I do, too, but my question is this, is the individual that is the coordinator, an employee of the city?
No.
Okay, no longer an employee of the city?
Currently, right today, or when this budget goes into effect?
When the budget goes into effect.
That would, that person would not be an employee of the city.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Because we're not funding that position, we're funding money that goes to the Main Street Board.
I'd like to take the 24,000 that we're saving there and put it towards broadband, and try to find another 16,000 for broadband, that seems like the last thing here. Do you all have comments, input relative to that, does anybody support that idea? And where can we find another $20,000 or so to support the broadband? That $40,000 number, Val or David, tell me how we got to that number, and is there any flexibility there, what does that, does that look like? I'm not sure, I know we got 40,000, I'm not sure.
The HR, we'll tag team this, Val, the HR Green, the consultants that came and visited, I believe, Mayor, you were there, that was what they suggested that would get us a good start. So the 24,400, I think, will also get us a good start, and will allow special projects to work on grants, using some of this to perhaps get some matching grants. So I think 24,400 certainly can get us started. Mr. Mayor, if we're going to try to supplement that with another 15,600 to get to the 40,000, then I'm a bit more cautious about that, and would have some thoughts on that after Val gives us his thoughts.
Well, I like what he said, I'm sorry, Val, but just to tag on, can we, I'll ask you, can we start with this 16,8, what do we got, 24?
24,4.
We got 24,4 left, we start with the 24,4, right, and work our way, and we can start with that number, can we not?
Well, I wasn't gonna jump to four, even though I wanted to jump to four when we started, but-
Four or 40?
Four, this, I have four. But the 40 grand, as David says, is just one proposal, we have another one out there that's 30,000, it's basically not, we're not, we're not talking about just laying fiber, it's a whole, it's a whole big vision, strategy thing, and everybody knows how much I love studies in the first place. But it really gets us into a vision, strategy for the whole town, and I was, my whole thing about this 40 grand was, if we can get grants, we should get grants, it should be there in the first place, in other words, we should have a revenue and expenditure sitting there at 40,000, if we don't get the 40,000, we don't get the 40,000. That was one of the comments I was gonna make about the budget, is we should have put a revenue in there of 40 grand, and an expenditure of 40 grand, if we didn't get there, gee whiz, we'd get a supplemental, we've never seen one of those before. So, so yes, actually putting 24,4 into it, of real, of projected money, is fine. Once again, this whole budget is full of revenue entries and things like that. My whole point, when we got to broadband, was why don't we just put the 40 grand in there as revenue grants that we're gonna seek anyway?
Makes sense. Well, that said, then, if we can get agreement, tell me what I'm missing now, if we take that 24,4 and put it to broadband, our bottom line still stays the same, our fund balance is the same, we've corrected the Main Street number a little bit, corrected broadband, council, what else do we need to discuss to get this to an initial posting?
I have a question for Val, I believe, the 24,4, there's been a lot of work done through Norm Steen's committee, are we talking now specifically for Woodland Park, Teller County, both?
This would be Woodland Park strategy, the Teller County is a whole bigger envelope chain, and I attend a lot of these meetings, she attends more than I do. But my whole thing with this 40 grand is to get us off the starting block, let's get going, let's get going, we're losing to all kinds of, we're losing to Buena Vista for Pete's sake, that's unforgivable. My dad used to live there, so I can say that. So, no, we're really talking about a Woodland Park strategy, and that'll include, whether it's HR Green, or anybody, we're gonna put it out to bid, you know, so it'll be, it'll be whoever, we have some good, solid proposals from some people, I've talked to other people out there who do this kind of thing also, but we would be looking at Woodland Park, that would be the whole intent. The Teller County thing, stringing the cable, the narrow ditches, all that kind of thing is work in progress, laying fiber really isn't what this is about.
What you're talking about is a PPACG project, it's a $2 million project, that'll bring fiber from Manatee right to Walmart, if I can remember.
One of the things that-
Yeah, I got the, got the answer I was looking for.
One of the things, we'll be very cautious with this, though, as council has expressed over the years, their concern about government intervention in the private sector, so we need to make sure that we're absolutely balancing the appropriate response to the broadband demands of this community.
We'll have many conversations relative to that, I'm sure.
If you wouldn't mind, thank you. And there's all kinds of private partnerships, public-private partnerships, there's all kinds of things. I think for us to get this strategy and vision going, and bring it back to council, is invaluable, because then we'll be able to see where we can work with people who are already here, things are already done. That would be my intention, is that we, the whole city becomes involved with this as a strategy, and council really gets to decide where we're gonna go with it.
All right, council, that said, do we have any other direction for staff, relative to the budget and initial posting on Thursday?
I went through this budget, line item by line item, like I'm sure the whole rest of council did. I was disappointed that a lot of the adjustments to get to our 10% were really revenue-based, we've got two, three pages of revenue projections, and one, a little bit about expenditures. Normally, when you, when you look for reductions, you're looking at expenditure size, because the revenue is really, it's all, it's all projections, and with the exception of the E9111, which is real nice money that we have received, the rest of it's kind of, a little, some of it's- the rest of it's kind of, a little, some of it's speculative and things like that. So I would have liked to see more expenditure contribution to the 10% than the revenue side. There's, there's several items in here that are kind of interesting. I, the number eight, which is 31,400 other revenue. There's not really a breakdown of that. I don't know what that's about.
It's just because there are a bunch of different small numbers and it didn't make sense to me to list them all out as 100 here, 500 there. They just add it up. It's real easy to compare the November 16 budget to today, tonight's budget, to see which line item's changed.
And just so the audience may understand, council didn't direct us to reduce expenditures. You directed us to get to a 10% fund balance. So you gave us that direction and we achieved that. The revenue adjustments, as we've said for years and years, those become more clear, as do the expenses. It's about a 50/50. I think there's about 32 plus 170, so about 200 in revenue adjustments and about 200 in expenses. So it was about a 50/50 split. The expenses, two are projections and as we get closer to the end of the year, those just become more focused. So it, there was a blend. As it is every year, as we get closer to the end of the year, we're able to better project revenues and better to project expenses. And that's what we did primarily in the 2017 arena. And we also then, that has an impact on 2018 as well. And there were some projects that, as we started the budget, we didn't have clarity on. And we now have clarity on those. The three homes in Top of Paradise, the condos, all those things came into clarity from the time we first started the budget process until this last iteration to you.
That's the 160 for the 9/11.
And the 160 for the 9/11.
Nice job on that, Chief.
That was huge.
So I'm a little more skeptical of the Aquatic Center revenues coming in. I'm a lot nervous about that. Naturally, that fund balance, if it's negative in the end, is gonna come out of the reserve. I think it's gonna be hundreds of thousands more, but that's just my opinion.
Hundreds of thousands more than 150?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. I do.
How'd you come up with that number?
Well, I just looked at the trajectories.
What trajectories? And this is a, this is a pretty significant statement.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm winging it. I realize I'm winging it. I'm just, this is my opinion. It's nothing, you know? I'm just worried that we will be much shorter than $5,000 short, is what I'm saying, which is the transfer that's, that's in the bottom on line 33. I think that 5,000 negative will be-
That's a change to the November 16. We've thought that there would be a subsidy from the city to the Aquatic Center of what, was it 170, 140? We knew it was gonna be over $100,000. The study that the Aquatic Project did said it would be about $100,000. When we did our first, when we did it with the YMCA, it was closer to a half a million. Our first expectation was about 200. And then after we started selling some passes and different things and getting some real costs, we got that down to just over 100,000 that we think is gonna be a subsidy. It's still about an 80 to 85% return, recovery. To date, we are right on target for selling passes that matched our projections for year end. The expenses seem to be going about where we thought they would be. So I appreciate your opinion, but we have more than just guesses associated with these numbers. We talked to other facilities. They gave us their ideas, the architects, the engineers, the plumbers, the heaters, the energy people. We've looked at all those numbers and come up. I'm a little scared, too, but I don't think I'm hundreds of thousands of dollars scared. So that's, that's my opinion.
So you have only one month's worth of data?
A month and a little bit.
Yeah. Were there any surprises there? I realize it's startup, so it's not a standard month.
We've not sold as many three-month passes as we thought we would. But we sell punch cards and daily passes and three-month, six-month and annual. The three-month is lagging way behind. But we put those in there primarily for people who would come here to spend the summer. So somebody staying in one of the RV camps. But what we're finding is that punch cards and daily passes are through the roof. During the five days of Thanksgiving, when the kids were off, we had 574 kids in there on those days off. That was really, really high. So we're right on, I mean, we're within a 2% of matching projections to reality on our sales.
Good.
Yeah, it's good news.
Anything else, Counsel? Staff, you know what direction you're going in?
We do.
Any questions for us?
There's just a few minor changes. We'll publish those numbers. We'll bring them to the council. We'll get them out into the community. We've got a day and a half to get some adjustments made, but these are, these are easy.
Bob, your last comment, but you need a microphone.
No, no, I'm an engineer in health projects. And I started out my career as a-
A pavement?
I built a road to the top of the highest mountain in Thailand, 50 miles or so. And that was quite-
Your point?
Go in there and please, the audience, please.
Yes, I was on my way.
We're gonna give you five minutes, Bob.
Okay. From the beginning, I, the one part of the budget I was concerned with was the street 410 account, the projects there. And I've got pictures of the ones that I'm, could you pass these along? Okay, I need one more. Okay. There are a number of projects I have real concern with as to whether they are actually required. If you see the pictures here at the top, left-hand corner is the intersection between 24 and Baldwin. As you turn off there, the city proposes to spend $300,000 on that little stretch of road there. And for the life of me, I can't see what the problem is. I've talked to Fred's towing and they said, we have no problems there.
Bob, I'm gonna stop this now.
Why?
Because I'm gonna ask you to come to council, because I think council is the right place for this.
I'd be glad to do it. I counsel, too.
I don't think it's here, not at this work session. Be glad to have you. Obviously, I wanna hear your input. I just don't think this is the time or the place. But would you sign up on Thursday and make the presentation?
I thought the budget was being locked in tonight, pretty much.
Nothing's locked in. It's gonna go on initial posting on Thursday.
Okay. So are we allowed to speak at initial posting or is it?
Of course.
You can speak on initial posting.
Okay. Well, keep your pictures.
Can I ask one question? I'm gonna talk loud. I'm not hollering at anybody, I'm talking loud.
Please do.
Where the drainage? Do you propose any different design than what the city may have?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
It could be a lot, lot cheaper than that. But I'll, I'll- Absolutely. Okay. So anyway, I'll see you Thursday evening.
Appreciate it. Okay. Now we can turn them all off. Thank you all for coming and we'll see you Thursday.